Good morning. We'd like to welcome everyone to the November 13th, 2014 Mesa City Council Study Session. I'm Mayor Giles. I'll conduct the meeting. We'd like to excuse Council members Kavanaugh and Summers, who are out of town today. The first item on our agenda is to review our agenda for the formal council meeting on Monday. I think there are a few items on here that would be good for us to get a little clarification on. As you know, the first items... So, Council, please let me know if there's anything in particular you'd like to talk about. I know the last time we met, we had an executive session, and the consensus was to nominate a couple of individuals to be the new city magistrates, and we will be confirming those appointments on Monday. But Mr. Brady, we're not swearing them in on that day. Is that correct? That's a separate...
It'll happen that day.
Or will. Okay.
Yes, we anticipate it happening at the beginning of the meeting.
Oh, good. Great. That's what I wasn't clear on. So, the mayor will swear them in, I believe, at that time on the calendar, right? Okay. Well, that'll be exciting then. All right. And just for information, that's Lisa Peters and Craig Fuji. Both very qualified people. I think the consensus is we're lucky to have people of that caliber that were available to fill those positions. Any other items on that page that we'd like... that we need to talk about? Moving over to page three. I don't see anything that jumps out. How about page five? I don't mean to make anyone nervous, but I was just curious to know a little bit more about the panoramic digital camera for the crime scene capture. Is there anyone here that wants to jump up and tell us about that? Sorry about that. I should have warned you.
It's okay. He's got a gun.
Does he? Okay. And anytime I... You know, I think I'm cool because I have an iPhone, and I can take panoramic pictures with it. And so, I saw panoramic... Kind of an expensive panoramic camera, and I'm just curious to know why this is so cool.
This was actually a collective request by the county attorney's office and primarily our homicide unit. What it allows for is them to have an entire spectrum of the crime scene in the photograph that provides a jury a better picture of how the scene appears. Gives them better perspective, depth, and things like that. So, whereas just a normal photo, a conventional photo doesn't always give perspective quite as much. We can use video at times, but still photographs tend to be a little bit... Have a little bit more jury. I don't know if "appeal" would be the correct word, but it provides the jury a better perspective of the scene. So, we are using this both for us as well as Gilbert PD, who we have an MOU with.
And the... Looks like the source of the funding is the Gilbert Regional Lab Services Fund.
Right. That is the... It's essentially a contract Gilbert has contracted with the Mesa Police Department to provide services similar to the ones we provide for ourselves in forensics and crime scene processing, as well as the forensic laboratory.
Okay. So, is that a fund that both City of Mesa and Gilbert contribute into to make these kind of purchases?
We do. We use it for our... We obviously use our budget, but there are... In the agreement, in the MOU, it's understood that we will use items such as this for both Mesa and for Gilbert. But we do A to Z processing for the town of Gilbert, as well as doing their DNA, fingerprints, things such as that. We go from beginning to end with them.
I see. And then, they're part of the deal is to provide this type of equipment?
Right. They give us a fund, and then there's specifics that we can spend with that funding, and equipment such as this would be one of those things.
Okay. Great. Thank you. That answers my question. Also, on page five, I just wanted to say thank you to the fire department for providing the additional information on Agenda Item 6F. I thought that was very helpful. Anything... Thank you very much, officer. Appreciate your help. And page seven. Debbie, you're going to stop me when I get to the part that we need help on, right? Okay.
Can we really just play more of a...
Okay. Great. Go ahead.
Quick question on 6L, the IT purchase. Anybody available to speak to that? Of course, often, anytime you see a single bid, it's a red flag. You want to look at it closely. So, if you could just walk us through... Reading the back of material is the manufacturer of the software. So, nobody else makes the software. Nobody else has a solution like this. I mean, it seems like IT is a really competitive business. So, just kind of walk us through.
Correct. Yeah, this is the manufacturer, and there are distributors, obviously, and they chose... Our guess is they just chose not to bid because they saw the manufacturer had done so. But yes, this is a really newly emerging market. There will be, I think, other products of this type in a year or so, but right now, they've kind of got the corner. That's why they're the unique manufacturer of this type. It really is... I mean, with the iPhone, with the mobile, with the cloud, it's about the network now. And while it may seem simplistic to what you're using, it's incredibly complex in the back. So, we're looking for these kind of tools. This is one that... One of the analogies we've used is that it's like having a 10-lane highway, and right now, we can only see one lane. This is going to introduce us into the other nine, to see how applications and information and data is traversing the network so we can troubleshoot. And what's really unique about this one, which is why I say it's emerging and why I think there'll be new vendors in the future, is this is something... It's really for application staff. It's going to give them insight to how these applications are using it so we can troubleshoot what's going on there. And it doesn't require, like, a major network expertise to understand what the tool is telling you. So, that's kind of the niche they've jumped into. Our application staff are very excited about being able to have this kind of tool. Typically, network monitoring is, you know, scrolled away in the network team, and now this opens it up to a wider breadth of staff to troubleshoot what's going on with their applications.
You know, it's rare when government's on the cutting edge of technology. Are we too far out ahead of that? I mean, is... If it's... How proven is the technology? Is this solution? I mean, how many people are using it around?
I can get how many other companies are using it. I don't know that it's new for corporate and private. It's potentially new for government as we... Well, some of our fellow partners also look at this kind of thing. But yeah, it's not that it's a beta-type of product that we're exploring. Not at all.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. Page seven, a couple of interesting things. I know we had a great presentation from the transportation plan folks a couple of weeks ago, and Item 7B is funding the study for light rail headed into the Fiesta area and then eventually out to Chandler. And Chandler is helping with the funding of that study. So, that's, I think, of interest to most of us. And then, Agenda Item 7D. Debbie, we're going to need to pull that from the consent agenda and reschedule it. I'm sorry, Deanne. Excuse me.
That's okay.
Sorry, Deanne.
Yeah. We will not receive the final official results from the county until Wednesday of next week, so we won't be prepared Monday to canvass the election. So, by state law, we'll have to... Council will have to make a motion on Monday... Monday night's regular to continue the canvas until December 1st, I believe.
Okay.
Yes. And Mayor, just... We will... We won't be canvassing, but as Deanne said, we'll have an item on the agenda to continue it until December 1st. So, it will be on the consent agenda unless Council has any objections, but it'll just be rephrased to just continue it.
So, 7D, the... On the consent agenda will be to continue this item. That's the way it'll be agendized, right? Okay.
Yes. It may move to a different item. I have to see, because we won't have a resolution. It'll just be a motion. But it will be on the agenda just to continue the canvas to December 1st.
Okay. Thank you. Anything on page eight? Okay. Well, that concludes the review of the agenda for Monday night. Next item on our agenda is the city center presentation. Looking forward to learning more about where we're at on this.
Good morning, Mayor. Council?
Morning.
Today, we've gone through all of our city center design competition, and I wanted to come and give you an update as to what our anticipated next steps are and get some direction from you as well, if possible. Before I get into that, though, and I apologize if some of this is repetitive, but I'd like to give a little bit of background on how we got to where we are right now. As part of the 2012 bond election, there was that... A line item in there for the design of the city center. We weren't sure how necessarily to proceed, so we decided to work through a design competition format. But in order to get the best possible consultants to be interested, we kind of modified it a little bit, and we made it essentially a modified design competition where we shortlisted and then selected three design consultants, and each design consultant received a $25,000 contract, which normally, if we were doing a true competition, that might have been what the winner's prize was versus actually having a contract. Because of that process, I think we got really good responses. We received 18 responses to the RFQ. They were from local, national, international firms, several of which are nationally, internationally known. The three teams that were shortlisted were OTAC, Mayor Reed, Woods Baggett and Surface Design, and Coell, Scheller, West 8, and Weddell Gilmore. Some key design criteria that we put in the RFQ that they each needed to respond to are listed here, but the real idea is that we wanted to provide some design parameters, but not any specificity to those design parameters to stifle any of the creativity. What was also unique about this process is that most of the design competitions, they give the design parameters. You give them a month, they submit their design, and then it goes to the jury. We decided to include a public portion of this, so we had design workshops, one in May and one in June. The first one was simply to gather public input, and the second one was to come back and let the design teams show what they... Either show what they've come up with in that time, or just to get feedback on how they're interpreting the public's response. All of those workshops were considering that each of them were about three hours long. They were really well-attended, better attended than I'd ever expected to be. And it culminated on August 28th, when the designs were revealed to the public. First, we had council study session where the reveals happened, and then another one at the Mesa Art Center. Since then, we've made a project website that's live. It has all the design teams' concepts, their reports, these documents here, and also videos of... That they produced that took... Take you through a tour of their design, as well as the video of them presenting the project themselves. Because even though I like to talk about this all the time, and I could go on forever, it's probably better to listen to them give you a tour of their site versus me. That website also had an option to provide comments and feedback from the public, so they could just click on a link, fill out a form, and give their feedback on each of the designs. Just as a reminder to you of which... What each of the designs were. The first design was the OTAC, Mayor Reed design. They called theirs the Living Room Plaza. This is showing the site. In the southwest corner is the City Hall building. This design was very focused on redevelopment potential for the entire city center site. It's about 10 acres in size, and their focus was to create a space within a space. So, they created about a four-acre, large, open space for gathering and events. And then, these are just some of the representative perspectives that they created, showing their design. One of the most interesting was this building that we're sitting in now, blowing off three of the walls and creating an outdoor pavilion with a light bar that came off that you could actually display shows onto as well. The second team, the Woods Baggett and Surface Design Team, they called their design Mesa Central. This design was focused around natural elements. So, through the center, there was the wash that was... Had then also had bluffs up against the wash, and then off of the bluffs came the foothills. And then, connecting all of them in the middle was the hangar, which was a very large building with the multi-use indoor space that could be programmed in several ways. And this is several examples of their perspectives, showing the wash, the foothills, and the hangar. And then, the third team, the Coell, Scheller, West 8, and Weddell Gilmore team, they called their design Mesa City Center, which is the name we gave it. But I'm pretty sure that if anybody were to ask them what design it was called, it was called the Wind Dancer, because it was focused around creating their interpretation of a new downtown square. They had an iconic element, the Wind Dancer, which is essentially approximately eight-story tall cooling tower with evaporative cooling, so that the space below could be 15 to 20 degrees cooler. And that's actually a scale model of it that they had produced as part of their project. And this is some of the representative perspectives that show their design. Now, for the primary reason I'm here today is to get Council's direction on the selection committee. We had a nine-person selection committee. It was mostly city staff that would be involved, so parks and recreation, arts and culture, transportation, and planning development, as well as David Short from the Downtown Mesa Association. There was a nine-person selection committee that shortlisted the teams and then also developed a recommendation for which team to be... To win the design competition and move forward with the next stage of the process. The selection committee's recommendation was for the Coell, Scheller, West 8, and Weddell Gilmore team for Mesa City Center slash the Wind Dancer, which I guess the prop kind of gives that away. So, first, I'd be open to questions about that recommendation.
Thank you. I'll... Quick... We've paid all of the design teams for the work they've done to this point. So, does that give us intellectual property rights over... I mean, can we say, hey, we like, you know, let's... We'll take the Chinese menu here, and we'll take, you know, two from this and three from that and put it together? Or is that not okay?
Mayor, if I could just jump in. I think one of the things we wanted to emphasize, because it's... It is kind of... We have to be careful not to fall in love with the drawings and the concepts, because really what you're doing, this is a professional services contract. So, we're really hiring the team, the expertise. Which group do we feel like not only understands, you know, the concept and working with downtown, but what's the team? What do they bring to get... What do they bring as a group that we can work with going forward? And I think from that point forward, you know, anything is possible, because we're really haven't... We're not competing for a particular feature in their plan. We're truly trying to hire the best team expertise. And then, Jeff, really, before we go much further, well, why don't you cover real quickly the recommendation of what you see the services of this team? Because I think that's important, too. We gave, if you recall, we gave each team a make-believe concept of $50 million project to work with, so they all were kind of using the same budget. But going forward, we need a team that's not just going to go out and do drawings for some concept at 30%, and then we just sit it on the shelf and not know what we're doing. So, Jeff, talk a little bit about what you see... How is... When we engage this team with the current funding we have available, what are the services we're looking for? Because I think that'll help, too, and as we decide on which of these groups to use, who's best capable of meeting our expectations in the next phase.
Sure. Mayor, Council, our anticipation for the next stage is that once we have a recommendation on the team that we go forward with, that we enter into essentially contract negotiations and scoping for a professional services contract. While that contract would include additional design, a large part of what we expect the next step to be is to continue to build on the momentum that we started with the workshops and to get the public involved as much as possible. We want this next phase to be as public as possible, to get as many people involved as possible. One of the selling points for the Coell, Scheller team is that they're active... Very active in the Hans Park redesign in Phoenix, which started out with, you know, community stakeholders numbering in the tens to community stakeholder meetings that number in the...
Thousands?
Yeah. So, their experience in garnering more public participation in the process has been very helpful. That's actually one of the reasons why I asked for this to be brought, is it's an example of how, you know, it shows what they can do to help us market this. This is a scale model that fits within maybe an eight-by-eight scale model of this entire block, and then a block on either side, so that people could visualize the site and what could be designed on there. And Chris was exactly right. The design that we have now, it's a 15% concept, and it can provide the framework for future design work, but I would anticipate that there'd be significant changes that would come out of the next phase of the design process.
Yes.
Jeff, thank you.
Mr. Tom.
I have a question. On your sculpture, and you said it was an eight-story cooling tower. Is that only to cool that? Or could it be used as a closed loop to help also cool the city complexes as well?
Councilmember elect, Mayor, it's... This is about an acre in scale. That's about an acre undercover or under... It would be under shade. So, it's a... Cooling towers have been used throughout history for a long time, but it's really just taking the cooling effect of drawing the air down from the higher elevation and speeding up moving out. So, it wouldn't create, I don't believe, enough of a cooling effect that you could loop it through with the city buildings.
Mr. Luna.
So, we've selected a team hypothetically. Then, will they go back out to community and get some more input relative to how the design moves forward?
Mayor, Councilmember Luna, we are at the very early stages. We... What we'd like to do first is get Council's agreement, I suppose, that this is a good team to move forward with. Once we have that, we have a lot of work to do to scope out what the next stages are, and we're going to have to have a lot of meetings with the team. The nice thing is this team has assembled a lot of subconsultants that can bring value to what we want to accomplish. So, there'll be a... Once we get to that scope, and we come back, and we'll provide you an update and get your direction again. But definitely, there's going to be a lot of... Once we get to the stage where they're under contract again, there'll be a lot of public participation.
And Mayor, Council, and we need that for a lot of reasons, when that's what we do as a public entity. But at the end of the day, if we decide that we're going to move forward with this urban plaza, obviously, we're going to probably have to go to the community to seek the funding for it. So, we need to build the concept, the design. We need to get the support and buy-in from the community that this is something they would really like to see, and what is it? What is it? And I think we've gotten a good framework. I think what we're impressed with this team is the way they, throughout the process, their connection with the community, their outreach, how they came back and were telling us things about the community and what they wanted. They'd already started a lot of that work, and that, I think, was kind of get past the pretty drawings and pictures and get to the value of what we're really trying to get is a team that really can connect with our community and come up with a design, whatever it might be, maybe the Wind Dancer and other things, that can get a lot of support from the community.
I think everyone's done a really nice job with the design process and the public involvement piece, and I'm just wondering if maybe it's time to do maybe a second competition, not for the design, but for the financing. So, it's... I'm trying to figure out how we get from here to $50 million, with all the money that we've spent over the last few years and making sure cash flows catch up with those expenditures. You know, I would really love to harness the creativity of the financial community, and I think the design, going back to your... The OTAC design, really, one of the principles that was on here was catalyst for redevelopment and repurposing buildings in the area. And certainly, the development around the site, around the urban plaza, could be a catalyst for this kind of development. And also, it could put the money we need in without having to do purely bond financing. And so, I think that there's more creative minds than mine to be able to get their heads around, how do you not necessarily spend $50 million in bond money to do this project? Because that price tag always gives me a little shudder. But, you know, how do we leverage the private sector and development around that site in order to accomplish this? Because I think it's a worthy goal. I think building a city center thing is a very noble, and the point that Mesa is at in its development, you know, I think it would be a great center for our community, for a community that some people say lacks one. But that financing piece, if we could get some creative people between now and the next phase, that can come up with three or four different ways that we could finance it. I mean, I think about a TIF light, you know? Usually with a tax increment financing, which you can't do in Arizona, it's contingent on a bunch of private developers, and they have to contribute to that TIF. But we own all this property here, and so, we can actually function as one without having the authorization to do a TIF. So, that would be my recommendation for next steps, is we pause just a little bit. Let's find out how we can finance this and pull it off, because OTAC, frankly, I don't think really got their head around... I mean, they make some indications of it in their design, but I don't think they embraced it as much as the... No, OTAC is the one that embraced the other design with the sculpture. They didn't quite get the private development as well, I think. So, I think if we step back, it might help us get from here to that $50 million number a little bit less painfully.
Thank you. Mr. Brady.
You know, I think having that input would be wonderful. I think the challenge, and I think there is a great opportunity, because I think what you're suggesting is that the city block, we control the development, potential development rights on the city block, whatever. That's the area we control. I think what... I think there's going to be a need for us to, like you said, come back and come up with some ideas on some creativity as far as the financing. My suggestion would be, though, is would it be helpful to go ahead and get these concepts and designs flushed out a little bit more, so we can kind of get a sense of the scope and the opportunities for development that may be available within this development... Within this area that we can control? And then, use that to determine what that value might be and how that would be used to go towards the city center?
Yeah, it's kind of a chicken and an egg here.
Yeah, well, eventually, they're going to have to come together.
Well, we have these design-build... We build stuff around town all the time with design-build and structure manager at risk kind of thing. You know, maybe it's the value engineering piece that we need to get these kind of finance people embedded with some of the design team. So, maybe the next phase is they need to start pulling in some of these folks to be able to creatively figure out how to do public finance without just purely doing debt financing. Because I would really have a hard time supporting just debt financing for this project.
So, maybe as part of the scope of services we come back to the Council with, will we include a component piece that's not only designed, but maybe there's a financial advisor kind of component that kind of can be part of that team?
Yeah, yeah. Figure out how to get some folks...
Okay. So, we'll include as part of... Whether they're directly involved with us, but we will bring that with you, a specific service or a group that could help us make those evaluations or come up those ideas?
Yeah. I think that would be helpful. I don't know. It's up to my colleagues, of course, but...
No, I agree. I think that needs to go in tandem. As you begin to create this project, we want to make sure that we have the financial... You know, the finance, that capability as we move forward. Otherwise, you can design and design and design and have this beautiful thing, but how are we going to pay for it at the end of the day? So, it's a good idea to, as we look at that and explore that, we're looking at the finance in tandem for the project.
And Mayor, if I may jump in, I was just confirming, and I thought it was... This design team has several subconsultants, one of which is an economic development advisory team, and another one with also, which is something that they did that the other teams didn't, is they took it to the next step, too, and say, okay, let's say this gets built, how much does it cost to maintain? And now that we know how much it costs to maintain, how do we put things in place that cover the maintenance costs so that this isn't going to become a burden on the parks' budget as well? So, coming up with, you know, a Parks Foundation or something like that can help maintain. So, I think, you know, if this team is the one that's moving forward, they may... Our discussions today may move some of their consultant work further forward than they probably had anticipated at this stage, but it'll be a useful part of the design work.
Great. Thank you. I agree with the comments that have been made here. I think this design team is impressive with regard to just the creativity that they brought, as were the other... as were the others, so I, I get it. What we're doing is selecting the team and not necessarily buying every detail of the proposal that they submitted to prove to us that they're the team we want. But I, I agree with the comments that the financial component of this is almost equally is important to the design component, because we, the voters of Mesa gave us a big endorsement a week ago, and obviously, they trust city government. They, they know we're not just going to go out and waste, or spend their money unwisely, and so we need to respect that trust and figure out how we do this, without going back and asking for more debt financing. This is a good point.
Also, Councilmember Glover, is, is this something that could also fall under the discussion of the Downtown Vision Committee to kind of think about? Because I know you have some creative developers on that, and, and other folks that have a vested interest in downtown? So, how, how do we envision the Downtown Vision Committee folding in with this conversation? Because...
I imagine a lot of the members on there, such as Supervisor Chukri, with, in his private life, is the head of the Arizona Restaurants Association, to try to get restaurants maybe on this plaza, to Charles Hugh Mantle, who has developed a lot of places in, in downtown and in Tempe. So, we do have a creative mind, that they can look at it and say, why not? So, I think there should be a, at least an agenda item for them to look at, to see what they can incorporate and work with this team specifically.
So, just, just to kind of summarize the consensus here a little bit, I think we, there is consensus to, as I understand it, to, to go with the design team that's recommended by staff, and we're asking for them, as part of what they do, to help identify funding for the project, or whether it's phased in, or there's a lot of private development that's incorporated into it, or exactly how we could pull this off.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I think, Mayor and Council, I think what, as Jeff said, I think our next, once we, now that we have this direction, we will then bring back to a scope of services that will engage with this team, and will highlight the, the things we've talked about today, whether it's the design concept, as well as the economic development part, the, in the financing. So, let us go back now and work with the team, come back to you with a, or, I don't even know, we'll come back with, we need to come back to you and kind of describe the scope of services, so you're aware of what those will be and move forward.
Thank you. And let me just say, I'm personally very excited about this. I think everyone is. I, I get a sense of that, that this is a great opportunity for us to develop downtown, kind of, as part of the light rail coming of age, and address parking issues, and the lack of an iconic space, and all the other great ideas that, that are part of this project. So, thank you for the good work that you put into this.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one last closing comment. I want to reiterate how, how good all the teams participated in this effort. A lot of you were interviewed by them. Their, their method of engagement for the, the public workshops, I'd like to take credit for it, but it was, it was a, it was a group discussion with all the teams and our staff members on how to come up with that model, and they really made it the success. Also, I'd like to, to introduce Michelle Shilor. She's here representing the design team. I know a lot of you got to meet her, but hopefully, you'll be seeing her face a lot more often.
Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, the next item on our agenda is to acknowledge receipt of minutes from boards and committees. Is there a motion? In a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. It's approved. Next item is reports on meetings and our conferences attended. Yes, Mr. Luna.
I just came back from a trip to Emozi, Mexico with MAG, and it was an exploration of economic development opportunities here in Mesa in Mexico, so it was very exciting. So, hopefully, we can get some traction and move in that area.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Richardson.
Earlier, Sunday and Monday, had a meeting with Smart Growth Americas Local Leaders Council, which I'm a member of, talking about smart growth and, and development related to urban areas and urban plazas and stuff like this, but we had a really good meeting in Washington, DC on Monday.
Good. I know all of us participated Saturday in a great Veterans Day parade, so thank you to those in the community that were part of that great event. It was kind of a Veterans Day weekend for me. I was, felt honored to participate in the RAF commemoration Sunday, and then the CAF sponsored a couple of different activities on Monday and Tuesday as well. It was, it was great. I think everyone got to meet Colonel Crandall, former Public Works Director for the City of Mesa. It was an honor to have him in town, and what a, what a great hero he was, and what a great representative of the City of Mesa, frankly. He made, made a great impression on everyone that he met, I think, these last few days, so that was an honor to spend some time with him. Next item on our agenda is scheduling of meetings and general information. Mr. Brady.
Thank you, Mayor. This Saturday, we have a couple of events. First of all, on Saturday, the Desert Trail Park Grand Opening would be held. The ribbon cutting is for a bike, it's bike trails. The ribbon cutting will be at 9:00 AM, and then there'll be demonstration riders at 10:00 AM, and they'll be, and then the park will be open to the public at 11:00 AM. The park is located at 2955 North Wrecker Road. We invite everyone and their mountain bikes out for that. This, also this Saturday, we'll have the Mesa, Mesa Shred-a-thon, as well as appliance electronics recycling. It'll be held this Saturday from 8:00 to noon at the city, at Center Street, at the Center Street facility. So, if you have some items that you need to recycle, we invite you to that. And our next council meeting will be Monday, November 17th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. All right. Next item is adjournment. Is there a motion for that? Thank you. In a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.